And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
What allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation by the God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you. Okay. Billy, you want to call a roll call?
Paul Gonzalez.
Here.
John Ewen.
Here.
Ryan Kivel.
Here.
Tracy Bartlett.
Trenton Lee.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the agenda for review of conflict. Anybody have a conflict with any of the issues tonight? Seeing none. Approval of the agenda, however, I'd like to add an item of 9C, which would be discussion for changing the date of the meeting. And so you can think about it. The suggestion is that we move it to the third Tuesday of the month. So we'll take that up when we get to that point. Okay, any other items on the agenda? Okay. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, moved by Trenton, seconded by John to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, this will be the first public comment for anybody who wants to come up and say anything with respect to what's on their minds other than the issues that are on the agenda.
I thought the public comment could be about the issues.
Well. Normally, when we have an issue, then we have a public comment during that issue. But if you have something you want to say, go right ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, 6:32.
Because that's what I want to comment is on the two issues that are here today. And I'm assuming that all of the members got the letter from Heather Smith of the watershed. And so part of what I have to say, I'm not going to repeat what she says.
Okay, could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry. Judy Pelto, East Bay Township.
Thank you.
Because a good portion of what she says has to do with the environmental issue of the zoning. So it, do I have to repeat what this is about? The Lake George Trail and the North Spider Lake Road?
You're fine.
Okay. First of all, I was part of a group of many, many people who had gone through many, many meetings with the township, the planning commission, zoning commission, when it came to the plan, the five-year plan for East Bay Township. And so part of all of this, we also sat through a lot of, I don't know if you remember me, but we sat through a lot of planning commissions, meetings regarding zoning. And so a big issue is the environmental issue of protecting the waterways, the lake, Forest Lakes area, which feeds into the watershed, which ends up in Lake Michigan, or the bay itself. And I thought that the variance was pretty clearly written that for the zoning board of appeals to approve the dimensional variances, only when the applicant demonstrates the conditions in Section 7.3 F2 are met. And neither case have they met those conditions in terms of what they're asking for in the exemptions and the variance. My big concern is that it's very clear, they can make adjustments. They can either do away with some of the impervious surfaces. They can change the size of the structures. There's a lot of, they have many other options rather than the variance exception. And my big concern is, having spent so much time and energy working on the plan and on the new zoning board of appeals, issues, all of that, that what's the point if you're going to make an exception? Because as soon as you make this exception, we're on that road again. I mean, it seems like in the township, we have ordinances, we have all kinds of restrictions or requirements that have to be met. And then we turn around and we make exceptions. And what does that do? It just starts it to make it harder and harder to enforce anything. And so that's my concern. I've spent a lot of time and energy here, along with a lot of other people. We thought we had accomplished a great many things working in conjunction with the commissions. But if this is approved, to me, this is like the voice of many is not being listened to. I don't know if it's because of builders. I don't know what the issue is that a couple of requests like this would override what so many people spent many, many months working on. So that's my big issue. I want to see, I want to see this enforced. Water issues are not something that, once you go down that path, it's easy to correct. I just, you look around the state. We already have a problem with PFOS in Lake Michigan. We don't need any more impervious surfaces than are absolutely necessary. I don't, I won't go into all the reasons that's in the letter, but I hope you seriously take into consideration how many people were involved in this township in making these changes, which we felt were good changes. Lot of discussion. Was really good with the planning commission. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We'll close the public hearing at 6:37. Okay. Any correspondence?
Two additional letters that came in, and presented those to the board members and also to the applicants.
Thank you. All right, we're down to the township reports, but Tracy's not here, so do you have any?
Nothing.
Okay. For the planning commission, the last meeting that we had on May 6, we had a number of items that came before the planning commission. The first was a site plan review for the state park for Phase 2. That one was approved and passed, and now they're into their second phase, which is the work on developing their headquarters and building a bridge over Mitchell Creek and the things that they're going to be doing in the state park. The second was submitting the Beach District Subplan to the township board for approval, and that was passed and moved on to them. And then we had three zoning amendments. One was on wireless communication facilities. The second was on non-motorized access connections. And the third was vehicular stream crossings. Each of those were passed, and that now goes on to the township trustees for their consideration. So that was the item that we had. It was, as I said, pretty full meeting, and those are the actions that were taken. Bill?
Nothing for the planning and zoning department.
Okay. All right, can we have, took a look at the minutes. Are there any changes, deletions?
Make a motion, the minutes be accepted as presented.
I'll second that.
Moved by John, seconded by Rod to accept the minutes of the April 8 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved? Okay. All right. Onto item number nine. The first is a variance request. Actually, it's two. And this is a variance request 3-25. Edward Cooper is the applicant and owner of a piece of land commonly known as 634 Lake George Trail, Traverse City, 49696. Property ID is 03630245-00. Located in the Lakes Area Zoning District. The request is for a variance to allow for 24 by 24 detached garage from the setback requirements of Article 3.1G for the minimum front yard to allow a 21-foot variance from the required 30-foot setback. And the second variance, which should be taken up separately, is an impervious area lot coverage to allow a 1.1% variance from the maximum 20% on the current area. That's the ordinance. So. Bill, you want to set the table?
Let Sarah take this one.
Oh, Sarah, I'm sorry.
So included in your packet was a staff report that I put together for this application. I think, Paul, you touched on what we're here for, the variance requests. Of note, in my report does mention that there was a previous variance in 2019 for this, or a similar garage that was granted. There's minutes in your packet related to that approval. I would just caution the, or I'm sorry, the zoning board of appeals that we have adopted a new ordinance, and there are different criteria than were in place in the old ordinance as far as the items that you reviewed to grant that variance. So I would caution you on saying, well, we did it before, so we should just do it again. We need to go through the steps for that front yard variance request based on the criteria that exist currently. And that's what my report has in it, is the current criteria in there. I did provide my review and answers to each of the criteria, but these are draft, something for the ZBA to consider. Change, you know, have a discussion. And then also, based on public input that you received during the public hearing, you may change some of the answers for that. So you'll notice that my recommended motion for the setback variance is to deny based on the standards of approval, being that one of the items is not satisfied in the report. And that's item E, which you can see in here, which is the minimum necessary to grant relief. The second request is impervious lot coverage, and.
We'll do that one separately.
Are you going to do them, like, two public hearings, all of that?
Because they're two separate variances requests.
Okay. I was just going to put them all together. I think it'll be, well, that's fine. We'll do impervious separately then.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to do them as a separate item.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, can we have the applicant?
Hi there. I've never done this before, so bear with me. I'm Ed Cooper. My wife kind of chickened out. She was afraid you guys would ask her some dimension question. The distance between, she didn't know how to answer it, so she kind of backed out on me. But I do represent her and my wife, we're both on the front. Also, my builder unfortunately had, he got his wife to take fifteen years. Where's he been last night? I don't know the details of it, then he said she's better than expected. And so he was going to do. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry.
You can't hear back here.
Is this not on? I probably wasn't talking into it. Okay, sorry. So anyway, he apologized to me, but he was going to do this, so I'm going to give it a shot here. So I just want to tell you, you know, how we got here. My grandparents built, you know, found that property, a little piece of property, 100 foot by 130 foot at the most in one direction, on a very steep lot, on a small, private dirt road on Lake George Trail. If you guys went out there, you saw it. In 1952, '03, whatever it was, he built a small, one-bedroom log cabin down on the water. We walked down about 75 stairs to get down to where the house was, and we parked up on a dirt, the only flat spot on the entire piece of land up by the road. And you've got all of about one and a half to two car lengths between dropping off the cliff, and, which we've got bricks lined there so we don't fall over the cliff or back into the road. That's all we've got to park on and put a garage on. So anyway, we, we, my grandparents have lived here. My parents lived here, eventually moved to El Capids. My brother lived here, my sister lived here. I've lived there. And we eventually bought them all out. My wife and I decided we wanted to retire here. We bought them all out and pulled us down, the old little cabin. We took care of the variances and the problems we had with the old cabin. There was, you know, the well was too close to the water. The septic tank was too close to the water. The power lines are too close to the neighbor's property. We came to here, took care of all those issues so that we could build a new place. We tore down the old little cabin, we built the new. It's not very big. We don't have any land down there. We've got two-bedroom house that we're going to retire, and we decided to retire here. We built the two-bedroom, we haven't finished it yet. The bottom level's not finished. And our builder essentially got behind. COVID was causing troubles. He didn't want to finish the house, got over his head on construction issues and price, and he finally backed out and didn't finish the garage. So he did, you know, he was on his way out the door. We had approvals in place, like she mentioned, like Sarah mentioned, that we had variance approvals for a two-bedroom house for 24 by 28 detached garage with a 15-foot variance from the right-of-way, resulting in a 5-foot setback from Lake George Trail. That's the way it was worded in the paper that you guys have. Variance was proved before. I guess you would call it, you proved variance in the land and it's approved. You have those, that proof if you backed out. So anyway, we built the house and we had a, decided we were going to.
Build and serve.
Sorry. Yeah, it's, sorry.
There's people watching online.
Keep reminding me. I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. It's kind of weird. So, you know, we signed up a new builder, got him in place. He got behind on some of his other jobs, got, decided he was going out of business, got out. We had to stop that issue. Got a second builder, put a contract and paperwork and design in place. He backed out. Got a third one this last year, put drawings and a contract in place, and he backed out. Finding, I guess, quality builders with time to complete a construction is very difficult. I've now got a brand-new builder. We've got drawings and a contract in place, and we prepared the two variances like you have in your hands. My wife and I have been living in the house ever since. We have two cars that we park up on the road. We're 68 and 69. We're old. It's kind of tough to go out in the winter and shovel your cars off every morning. And every time the hailstorms come, we got to go up and put tarps on the cars. And we have no place to store anything. We're living out of storage shed with our snow blowers and our bicycles and our paddle boards. And I, you know, we can't, we've got nowhere to put them. We can't carry them down the hill. We're not capable of carrying them up and downhill. We have no stories down there. And we need a garage. I mean, we don't, we're not looking for a gigantic garage. We're looking for a garage you can put two cars in. It cannot go down the hill. It can't build down there and drive down. There's no way to drive up.
Stay close to the microphone, please.
So there's only one spot to put it. We have the septic field up there. We have the water up there. We have the septic tank up there and the drain field. And there's one location for the garage. It can't go any further away from the road without falling down the hill. And we're kind of stuck. We're only asking, not asking for anything special. Most of the houses, many of the houses, not most, many of the houses on Lake George Trail are little properties like mine. We have 100 foot of frudge and a steep hill, and you've got about ye much land to put something on. And the garages, I brought many pictures, are 5 foot, 4 foot, 8 foot, 16 foot, 11 foot from the road. And we don't have any choice. That's where they're at. So I'm not asking to do anything special that anybody else did. We certainly wouldn't have decided to retire here if we didn't think we could build a house and a garage. So that's what we did. We issued the two setbacks, so you have the information in your hand. I'll be glad to answer any questions. But that's what we're asking for. I think the one variance for impervious surfaces is 1.1% over the limit.
That's going to be a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. We're just dealing right now with.
The first one is a setback from the road. The original approval was for 5 foot. We're now, and if any of us went out there with a tape measure, we could get nine different answers. Trying to find the edge of the road is a dirt road. It's maintained by us, the association, by paying a guy with a tractor to plow it. So sometimes it's this wide, sometimes it's this wide, but it's never two cars wide. And my property line is about eight feet from the edge of the road. Utilities are, you know, located, trees are located, utilities, et cetera, all located between my edge of my property line and the edge of the road. And I'm not counting that, because you can't. That's not my property. But I've got about, get the numbers right. I've got 21 and a half feet between the stake for the edge of the garage and the edge of the road, which is way less, way farther away from the road than what was previously approved. I don't know how to make it go any further down. We've got about 5 feet of the garage on flat land and the rest of the 24 feet off the edge of the flat land goes down the hill. So I've got this, you know, big cement wall I've got to build for the, down the hillside. And, you know, if anybody, if, I don't know how many people got to see it, but we don't really have any choice. It's not like I'm asking for something special. I don't have anywhere else to put the garage. And that's what I'm asking for.
Okay, good. Thank you. We'll probably have you come back up.
Sure.
All right. All right, let me open the public comment at 6:51. Excuse me, 6:52. No, you're only allowed to talk about it once. Okay. All right, seeing nobody, it's, close it up at 6:52. Bring it back to the board. All right. Could I ask you to come back? I have a couple of questions for you. Do you know offhand, what is the slope of your property? Do you know what that slope is?
I know if you lay down on a quad, lay down on a seat with your hands on them, you can barely get it up the hill. It's about 65, 45, 50?
I was, I did take a site visit, and I grant you. It is a very steep incline, but I was just kind of curious as to, if you knew what the slope was on that.
I don't know how to calculate it. I'd be glad to get it for you. I have no idea how to, don't know how to calculate it.
No, it had to be at least, what, 20%, 25%?
Oh, yeah, yeah, way more than that.
Yeah, but I was just, you know.
And the right side, you know, again, measuring from the garage to the road or from the lake to the road, or nothing is square. Everything is, and the right side of the property's steeper than the left side of the property.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's, oh, I'm sorry. Rod?
I mean.
No, I was.
Are you done with your questions?
No, I was just going to make one comment, a clarification. For anybody looking at the details of the documents, there was a slight error in the fact that on the, was it the picture?
Yeah.
The actual aerial view of the property is not the property. It's actually the house next door. The property is 634, and it was showing 626. That's the only thing that's wrong. Everything else, as far as the material in the write-up, is correct. But I just want to clarify for anybody watching that that particular picture is the property next door. Okay. Rod?
The one question that I had is, that is a private road with probably a homeowners association of some type. What, how far, they have an easement of some type for that road, correct?
I don't know exactly what that means. Help me.
Well, the road has got some type of, you know.
There's no sidewalks. There's no walk area. There's no maintenance.
I was at the property, but in order, there's got to be in the standards someplace an easement for that road. And I'm wondering how far you are either in or out of that road easement.
So that's what I tried to, all I can do is take measurements of what I can see. So I can certainly find the measurement of how.
You didn't.
I can certainly take the measurement of how wide the road is. It's about, in front of my house, it's about 15 and a half feet. Barely enough for two cars to sneak over if you kind of drive in my driveway.
I just, I'm.
But then there's a distance from the road to my stake of my property line that's been surveyed, and that's about eight feet.
So is, when I looked at it, is the garage completely on your property?
Oh, yeah, definitely. And another 16 and a half feet onto the property.
Okay.
Before the first piece of the garage is touched.
Well, according to the survey, it's only nine feet off of the road right-of-way. So that 16 is a measurement from the edge of asphalt?
Well, that's where my wife didn't want to be here. We don't know what that right-of-way is. I don't know what that means.
Well, that's what, where those stakes are should be the corner, the edge of the road right-of-way in your property markers back. So you're nine feet.
The property stakes, you're saying?
Correct.
But property stakes are about eight feet from the edge of the seeable road.
Right.
That's about right.
And that, the stakes are at the edge of the road right-of-way? And so that's what he was asking about. You said that the flags, those markers that were put in by the surveyor?
Yeah, for property, yes.
Right. That's delineating the edge of the road right-of-way.
So he's back 16 feet from that?
No, he's back nine feet from those.
Nine feet from that?
Yes.
So any apron or anything like that for the garage?
I'm back 16 feet from that marker.
Well, the survey says nine.
Let me help here, because I thought he asked a different question. The stake of the property line is eight feet from the edge of the road.
Mm-hmm.
I'm 16 and a half feet from that stake from the edge of the marked garage. Okay. I see what you're saying. By the picture that you have in your hands.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's not correct. That's way closer to the road than we're asking for. And again, I think that's, he's showing a nine feet from the right-of-way. I'm 16, but just right at that rate, I'm 16 and a half feet from.
From those stakes that he installed. I mean, for the zoning board of appeals, I don't know if the 16 versus nine makes much of a difference in your decision for that, except for if a lesser relaxation could come into play for where that setback is, maybe part of that discussion. A variance would still be required if it were 16 feet from that property line. So I don't.
Right, but it's closer to that property line than we're thinking. That setback really isn't from the prop, from the right-of-way. It's from, that's what I was looking at, is that nine feet. So really, you were not getting the setback from the, from the road right-of-way.
So my builder's not here. I'm not sure why that number says nine. He might have presented differently than I did. But I went out and made trip, took all the measurements today so I didn't, I don't want to get in an argument about dimensions with you guys. So all I can do is measure what I can definitely measure.
But all it would really mean at this point is that it'd be a variance of either 21 feet or 14 feet. You still would require a variance.
Right.
From the position back to.
Unless we push the garage off the hill. Yeah.
I understand. No, but as I said, it's just, you still need a variance. The question is that it's either a 21-foot variance, given nine feet, or if you go by 16, it's going to be 14. But still, it's going to be.
I hope whoever came out to see it would have took the measurement so I, not just counting on my word that someone did it with.
Right. But the discussion itself would still be germane to the variance, so you're going to need that.
Sure.
I was just going by the site plan.
No, no, and that's what we have to go by.
Your site plan that was submitted is what it is.
I understand. I think he needs to revise the site plan, but anyway.
Trenton, any questions?
What side of the garage are you planning on being able to go in through? This little square facing the road? Okay. Okay. And as was noted on number E, or letter E here, any willingness for going to a one car instead of a two car?
We have two cars.
Okay.
I can tell my wife hers goes out in the snow. I'm sure she'd be screaming at me if she was standing next to me.
Okay.
That's all mine.
John? Nothing.
Okay. I think you, you had mentioned back in your application just some discussion about other possible measurements. Do you, are you refer, are you familiar with that?
I am, I think it may be the second.
It says that, yeah, there would be, there would not be a variance if the extra 20 by 100 feet of land between my southern property line and the line is used.
Yes.
In the calculation.
That's for the second issue that you've worked.
Is that the second, okay, fine. Then we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
This is not mine, somebody brought it in.
All right. All right, back to the board. Any comments, thoughts? Trenton?
You know, as stated in E, it's not the minimum necessary. And because the second variance is only a 1.1 impervious variance, it would make sense to maybe talk about maybe making it a smaller structure so they wouldn't need that impervious variance. And I would, you know, be inclined in revisiting this site plan if there was a little bit more away from the road and loses that need for an impervious.
Well, that's going to be the second topic.
Yeah, yeah. But it would affect, the change of size would affect both, but yeah, that's where I'm at.
John?
Yeah, I'm kind of trying to, the impervious sections has got to be buffalo neck comes next, so I.
Yeah, comes next, right.
Let's consider the second one again, but are you thinking about taking that shed out of there?
You got to come up to the.
Well, if you're just starting to ask me about how to meet the second one, I'm only looking for 1% of 17,000 feet, right?
Then, we'll hold on that one, okay. I know this is a little crazy, but we'll hold it.
That's okay.
Rod?
No, as long as, I'm just, I think the site plan's slightly different than what we're kind of getting figures on. And I think we got to, you're going to have to get your arms wrapped around. That's a surveyed site plan that you're putting up and that when you build this, it's got to meet that site plan, so.
And the number that was on there that said nine, we want the distance from the edge of the garage to the edge of the road? Edge of the property. Okay, okay, okay.
The site plan has been.
I understand, I just wanted to make sure, I knew what that was. It's that 16 and a half that I'm talking about that's not on there. Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, then let's go through the requirements. The first requirement under section 17.3F is a practical difficulty exists on the subject site such as exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, or area, presence of floodplain, exceptional topographic conditions, need to comply with the federal or state law, and strict compliance with the zoning ordinance standards would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the, from using of the subject site for a permitted use, or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. Demonstration of a practical difficulty shall have a bearing on the subject site or use of the subject site and not to the applicant personally. Economic hardship or optimum profit potential are not considerations for practical difficulty. Okay. Trenton, satisfied?
Yeah.
John? Satisfied, yeah.
And that's based on the criteria, that, what I had written in my staff report?
The topography, we all were there and we know exactly what, it's way down. As I said, it has to be at least a 25 to 30-foot slope on that property. And there's not a lot of width. B, the demonstrated practical difficulty results from exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the subject site at the time the ordinance was adopted or amended, which are different than the typical properties in the same zoning district or the vicinity.
I'll say satisfied.
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 I agree.
Agree.
There's only a certain amount of room up there.
Okay, the applicant's problem is not self-created. I would say, I'd say that's satisfied because the topography of the property.
Again, yes.
Okay. D, the variance would provide substantial justice by preserving substantial property rights similar to those enjoyed by the majority of other properties in the vicinity and other properties in the same zoning district. The decision shall not bestow upon the properties special development rights nor enjoy, not enjoyed by other properties in the same district or which might result in substantial adverse impacts on properties in the vicinity, such as the supply of light and air, significant increases in traffic, increased odors, an increase in the danger of fire, or other activities which may endanger the public safety, comfort, morals, or welfare.
Satisfied, yeah.
Yes?
Satisfied.
Yes, satisfied.
Any justification for being satisfied?
Again, there is other garages in the area that are there. And this is on his property, it's not going to be affecting any other property.
And I just asked that so that in a minute we can document why you're saying yes.
Yes.
Can I pass the pictures around to the other houses?
No, we're in the process right now. E, the variance shall be the minimum necessary to grant relief created by the practical difficulty. Now, I'd like to just editorialize on this one for a second. When I read this, I looked at this and I said, okay, fine. Some of the decision on this was being a one-car garage versus a two-car garage. And I thought, however, this variance request is for 21-foot or 14-foot variance from the front of the property line to the road. And that request would be the same whether it was a one-car garage or a two-car garage. Because we're talking about a variance from the road, not so much the size of the footprint, but actually the variance. And that's what I was saying, that this is, even though the discussion is around whether it's a one- or two-car garage, that's not what the question is. The question is, are we going to provide a variance from the edge of the road up to the garage entrance? And in that case, I would have to say, depending on what I saw on the property, I would say that this would be satisfied in my book. But that's open to the committee in the debate.
I agree with what you said, that we're looking at a variance of a setback, not a, so. Doesn't matter if he puts a shed up there, it's going to be the same setback. So I'd say, I agree, that would be, that would also be satisfied.
I agree with you. The only, the only thing I could think of is some way to turn that garage sideways, so it's only a 12-foot garage, but I don't think that would get us in the distance, so.
Even if you turned it, you're still looking for the variance.
Right, you're still looking for the variance. So I kind of thought about that too, but I don't think, I think it's satisfied.
I guess I'm just wrapping my head around, what does it mean by minimum necessary to grant relief created by the practical difficulty? Like, does the structure need to be the minimum possible to make it a new structure? Right, so a one-car garage would be, in my opinion, the smallest structure possible to put there necessary to grant relief rather than a two-car, right? So I would argue that that's not satisfied because it's not the smallest structure that could be proposed for that occasion.
As I said, it's fine, but no. But.
Again, we go back to the setback, what's the setback?
Setback.
What's the setback for that?
So just by, let's say, roll call, you are saying no or yes? That's satisfied, not satisfied?
From my interpretation of what it means by minimum necessary to grant relief, I would say not satisfied.
Okay. John? Satisfied, I'm satisfied. Okay. So it's satisfied.
Three to one satisfied.
Three, yeah, three to one.
For the set.
For the, for the setback from the road to the structure.
For that criteria.
Setback of nine feet or 16 feet.
Right, it doesn't make any difference, you're still going to have to have a setback.
Right.
Right.
Are we going to grant a setback of a number, are we, of a distance?
Well, right now, we're doing, by this is 21 feet. And what we have in front of us is 21 feet, right.
Yeah, it's 21, so if it turns out that he only needs whatever the other number was, then it can be less, it just can't be more.
Right. Okay, F, the conditions and situations which necessitate the requested variance is not so general or of such a recurrent nature as to make the formulation of a general regulation for such conditions reasonably practical. Rod?
I think that's satisfied. Hold on, I'm lost a second. Give me that. Is that F?
F.
There it is. Not satisfied.
Not satisfied.
Necessitate the variance is not so general or of such a recurrent nature as to make the formulation of a general regulation. Satisfied.
What is that saying?
Well, it says basically that this is a condition that would actually, is so recurrent that we'd have to have actually a regulation to be dealing with any situation like this.
Basically, it's a unique request.
Yeah.
Is what he's asking for a unique request tied to the property that wouldn't apply to every property in that district or every person on that block is kind of what you're, how you're looking at it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, driving out there, this may not be unique with this.
It's not general for everybody because this property has a very unique feature, the topography. And that's why this is a unique question on this property. The property, not the individual, the property.
And I kind of looked at it, the reason I said size is because when you have a larger parcel and you have a steep slope, you can make switchbacks to get down to your house, but because it's so limited in width, you're, you know, a driveway is straight down the hill, there's no opportunity to traverse the grade to get down out of that setback area.
Right.
So I didn't really explain that in the criteria, but that's why I added size, just as an additional item.
I'm with you.
You can get down, you can't get that.
Okay, I personally think it's satisfied.
I think I, I think I had it turned around. I am, it is satisfied for this property.
Trenton?
I was looking at something, it would be general.
Okay, G, there's no reasonable alternative location on the lot for the proposed improvements for which a variance is sought, where such an alternate location would eliminate the need for the requested variance or reduce the extent of the conditions necessitating the variance.
Satisfied?
Yeah. Right. And finally, the requested variance shall relate only to property that is under the control of the applicant. That's satisfied, okay. So based on the above findings, we need a motion.
Well, based on the discussion and the fact that all items are satisfied, I believe, and they're not satisfied, then I would make a motion to grant the variance for the 21 feet for the garage.
For the front yard variance?
The front yard variance.
I agree, I give support.
All right. Motion by John to approve case number 325 for 634 Lake George, 0363024500 for front yard variance from 4A detached garage as it does not, as it meets the standards for approval. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. So this variance.
Can I record my no vote? I'm a no.
You're a no?
Yes.
Okay. Trenton is a no. All right. Well, it's three to one, Trenton.
Democracy.
Okay. All right, so it's approved for the variance of the dimensional variance from wherever the garage is, 16 feet or nine feet. That has been approved. Now we're going to be looking at the second part of that variance request, which, and this is why I'm separating them, because this is now on the request for a increase over the 20%. And this would be 21.6% or roughly 22% versus the 20%. So it's a 2% variance on the impervious area of the property. So do you want to come up and?
Chair?
Yes.
Do you want to go through a staff report first?
I'm sorry. I am sorry, excuse me. I jumped the gun there.
Well, I was going to say, you can stay there, I won't be long.
Sarah?
Yep. So, I mean, basically, the beginning all starts with Sam, we're familiar with the property, but I did break out the impervious lot coverage standards and criteria. You'll find in reviewing this that most of the criteria I found was not satisfied for the impervious lot area coverage, being that there could potentially other options for impervious areas to be removed from the site, that there is a large enough building envelope on the site. And I think you'll have some of the similar discussions that you had last month and the month before with impervious lot coverage. This is a new section in the ordinance, lot, the previous lot coverage area from the old ordinance. And so you're seeing, and we have multiple cases tonight as well with the impervious lot coverage, there would have to be a very unique circumstance where you're asking for something more than what's allowed, being that we have house areas that have very small minimum requirements and dimensional requirements, looking at garages and talking about, you know, one car versus two car and what's appropriate in, you know, East Bay Township in northern Michigan for that component. So those are all kind of, I, things I looked at when I was evaluating the criteria. Again, like the last time we went around. Feel free to discuss, change, amend the standards being satisfied or not satisfied from the staff report. This is just a starting point for you to consider in your review.
Okay. All right, let's talk about your.
Okay, so, you know, it's a 17,000 square foot piece of property with a detached garage and a house. You've got to have some steps to get down there. You don't really have much playroom and I'm over by 1.1%. We, in the calculations, my builder made me use this parking area, if you guys looked up there, all the way from, I've got. up there, all the way from, I've got, I've got trees where the cell, the, the water and the electric lines and the utilities are located going down to the house, and we didn't consider that. But we did consider, as soon as the trees end, all that vacant space that you could park a car on at the time, all the way across to the shed, as impervious. What, impervious is good or bad? Help me.
It's impervious.
Meaning, can't go through.
Right.
So, we counted all that as impervious, because you have to count the driveway, and I'm going to need a driveway. I'm certainly not going to need, what, can we fit there 10 cars, nine cars wide? I'm certainly not going to have a nine, 10-car-wide driveway. I'm only having a driveway that goes to the garage. So it's very easy for us to meet the 1.1%, just not make a driveway that goes clear over to the shed, which I'm not going to do. So, I've got that going for me. Also, my property line down by the lake, the stakes are 21 on one side and 22 feet from the water on the other side. 100-foot of frontage, that's 2,200 square feet of land that is not called mine by the stakes. I mean, most people own your land to the water, but I don't own from the property line down to the water because of what was measured in 1954. I don't know how to explain it, but... So that's what I described in one of those items, I think you mentioned it earlier. I was talking about the 21 feet between my property line and the water that it can't be built on, there's no good road cement going to be there. It's just not calculated by us in the calculation.
Okay. But we have to go by what we're looking at here, which is the, the surveying dimensions of the property.
I think it shows the spot from the property stakes down to the lake as being not part of it.
I...
Can I help you point to it? I don't have it in front of me.
No, I, I... Believe I, yeah.
Between me and the water, unbeknownst to me till we had a survey, I didn't know I didn't own to the lake. I mean, I, everybody owns to the lake.
I see here, it's, if I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly, it's 19 point, or 19 feet on one side and 17 feet on the other?
Is that the...
That's correct.
Is that the normal high, high water?
That's what...
What's the intermediate traverse?
That's just the traverse line for measurements. I, I believe the lot area includes all the way down to the ordinary high watermark.
But the stakes, measured stakes, that we did the calculations on, do not. We can only, we can only count what's inside the stakes, we thought. I believe that's my land, and I own, you know, I deserve to count it, but it's not in the drawings.
Bill, that, that area was included. The stakes are...
Excuse me, excuse me. If you're, yeah, either you come up and, but you could, you can make that, yeah, come...
Jesse Mitchell, 3356 Jackson Road, Kingsley. I manage a survey company that produces best site planning. And the area is ran to the water's edge. The stakes are just setback at arbitrary traverse lines, they don't get washed out.
Okay. Okay, so the, the total square foot of 17,020 feet is from, you know, quote, the road down to...
To the high watermark.
Okay.
Which is...
So it's included, then? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for educating us.
Thank you. That's good. That clarifies that. Okay.
Sounds like I was mistaken. I apologize.
That's fine.
If I do the math in my head, the 100, if I look at the dimensions of the property without using that and multiply it out, I, I think I'm going to easily come up with greater than 17,000 square feet, but, again, I'm only looking for 1%, and I can definitely handle it by not putting in so much of a drive. That's all I got, I think.
Then we'll call you back up. All right, now we need to have a public comment, and we're opening that at 7:25. Seeing none, we're closing it to 7:25, and we'll bring it back to the board. The, the problem that, not the problem. We are, we are bound by our ordinance and maintaining the ordinance. Yes, we can grant variances, but this is one that you also have some control over, one of which is that shed that has about 100 square feet.
10 by 10, yeah.
If, if you wanted...
Right, that's what I'm saying, 10 by 10 is...
Yeah, yeah. So, so you would, you know, gain 100 if you didn't have the shed. And then you just mentioned the fact that in the frontage, which is your parking area, where you have your cars at this point?
Well, you could park anywhere up there because it's open. There's no trees.
I, I know, I'm just pointing out what I'm talking about.
Yes.
That you counted that full area of 115 feet by, call it, nine feet, or about, as all that gravel, that that is counted as part of your impervious area? And, but you would also have an opportunity of doing something, which is roughly by my, you know, 1,035 square feet, that, that if you wanted to adjust that to change it from...
Plant wildlife. Yes.
Yeah, to, to, to make it a more pervious area. So these are some of the opportunities that you might have to, to look at, and could have a bearing on the, on the decision that's made tonight. Just saying.
We didn't think it was right to submit a variance request and already assume we're going to put wildlife there and have you decide that it doesn't look like there's wildlife there yet.
Okay.
So we used the entire space as, you might argue that that's parking or non-impervious.
Well, it's not impervious because it's gravel.
Well, it isn't, it, most of it is not gravel.
It's not impervious because it's considered parking.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm saying. All I got to do is just decide I'm not parking there.
Yeah, under the ordinance, if you have anything which is on a vehicle-driven or a road-type item, but primarily used as a vehicle area, whether it be a parking lot or not, that is, that is counted as impervious to the property.
Right, and we counted that.
You, you counted it as part of the impervious?
Yes.
Okay. So you could adjust that if you needed to.
Yeah, sure. We won't park 12 cars wide anymore. We now know where we're parking.
Well, if that's the case, we could, you could come up with another 170 square feet of impervious surface, and you wouldn't need a variance.
Right.
Right, so...
Yeah.
Back with a different plan that shows that.
Yeah, there is a, there is a, in your, right up, this, right here, this, in the breakdown, there's a statement in here that the proposed impervious surface area for the garage and the drive, okay, for the garage and the drive is, no, is 1,256 square feet.
That's it, right. We assumed all of that land.
Yep.
Way bigger than the size of the garage.
Yeah, the garage itself is 576 square feet. Okay.
Truly, we'll put the gravel in front of the garage, and if, whatever, wildlife, I don't want, you know, walnut trees in there, but certainly plant wildlife, and it'll be fine.
If you were to, you know, if you were to resubmit this with any corrections to that gravel area, and by some reduction, and, you know, the shed too, that would be something that, that you could resubmit as a, as a variance request with the recalculation of that, that property area.
Do we have to go through the two-months process again?
Chairman Gonzalez?
Yes.
I believe if you reduces it to 20% and shows on a site plan, that's going to be less than 20%, we could issue an land use permit without the variance request, coming back to the board.
What they're talking about is if you get this reviewed and make the changes, this is your site plan, what was submitted, and if it comes under the 20%,
You don't...
there's no, there's no variance needed.
We could, we could, yes, what we could do is, is make a motion for that, and then leave it up to the planning department to follow through to see that the corrections are made.
If I'm correct on my calculation, he has a 17,020 square foot lot, he's looking for a 1.2%, you know, addition to that, that's only 204 square feet that he has to remove from the calculation.
Right.
To get a land use permit and no variance.
10 by 20, right.
Yeah, exactly.
And we require that, we require that to be staked off, to be replanted, you know, in the permit process.
I tried to tell my builder I would have started planning yesterday, but he said he'd already submitted the plan, and it wouldn't do any good to be talking about something different than the plan said at the moment.
Yeah, you're, you're currently, you're currently at requesting 3,608 feet. 20% on your property would be 3,404, so you're only off by 204 feet. But you do have that strip that currently is impervious, and if you can bring that down to a, a situation where it's now back into, call it its natural state...
Sure.
You'd be fine.
Yep. I'll start tomorrow, but two stakes up, nobody parks left anymore. A plant. I know they got wildlife stuff, I just don't know what it's called.
I have to get your site plan.
I understand, I'll, I'll ask him, okay? Sure. He's not here, I apologize.
Because Bill's going to want that site plan submitted, and then he has to build to that site plan. That's what these are for.
Okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. You want me to do it? Go ahead. I'll make a motion that we post, postpone this until the next meeting.
Yeah, I think you can postpone to allow the applicant to revise the site plan.
To revise the plan.
Right. And then if...
And then if it does come in under 20, we don't have to have it at the meeting, right?
Correct.
So I would postpone this and let you revise it and resubmit it for the next meeting.
I'd second that.
Okay. Okay. Propose, the amendment's proposed, excuse me, proposal by Rod is to postpone action on this variance, to give sufficient time for the applicant to redesign his site plan and submit that to the staff for approval and, and action. If, in fact, it comes under the 20%, then no action is furthered by this board. We have a second, so Rod and Trenton seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. I have been requested that between our second and third item of the night, that we take about a five-minute break, if that's possible. So we'd like to adjourn at, at 7:35 and reconvene at 7:40. So we'd like to adjourn at 7:35 and reconvene at 7:40. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting at 9:40 on the nose.
7:40.
Yes, did I say it was 9:40? 7:40, thank you. No, I was looking at item number nine, okay, never mind. Thank you for listening.
I'm very modest.
Yeah, okay. Okay, variance request 4-25 is by Kevin Baragat and Jesse Mitchell, applicant of apostle of land commonly known as 4452 North Spider Lake Road, Traverse City 49696, property 03780219-00, located in the Lakes area, Lake zoning district. The request is for a variance to allow for an approximate 35 by 35-foot addition to an existing dwelling. Variance request from 31-G impervious area lot coverage to allow for an 11% variance from the maximum 20% impervious area allowed, so.
Yes.
Take it away, Sarah.
So similar to the last couple of reports you've heard, we're talking about impervious lot coverage for this as well. I did just do the kind of basic 35 or 36, which you had mentioned, but there is kind of a portion that runs across the front of the house. But for this request, like mentioned, there is a current home on the property, it was constructed prior to zoning, that's how it got there, and they are requesting to add on to put an attached garage on the property. Something that is different in this case from the other cases we've heard about impervious lot coverage, and I mean, you kind of explored that in this last application, is they are removing and restoring some of the site to take out existing impervious area to try to make up, some of the makeup for this addition on the property. So I think that should be considered. In the end, I do have many criteria that's not satisfied, again, being that it's impervious lot area, potential other options that could be available to reduce further or eliminate the need for the impervious lot coverage for this. And I think you'll recall to a conversation at the March meeting that, you know, impervious lot coverage might be something the planning commission is better suited to take up if we have requests for it versus granting variances for it, if you believe there is an issue with it, or potentially, it's just because it's a new regulation in the zoning ordinance that we're finding a lot of requests for variances, for the impervious lot coverage consideration, or maybe the items that are included, which was a previous discussion, if you recall, by the ZBA.
All right, thank you. The applicant, please.
Hi, my name's Jesse Mitchell, address is 3356 Jackson Room in Kingsley, Michigan. I'm a surveyor and engineer, and I've assisted landowners in preparing documents and studying what possibly could get approved. We prepare a lot of site plans, it's our business, and all sorts of different knowledge and very familiar with these bay township and the regulations. We don't advise people often to seek variances. So unless you really have no alternative, you know, typically, they've got to be very detailed in order to get support. And many variances do have our name on the title block, but we didn't support the applicant's request. And this variance, I feel that the work that the landowner has put in to minimize the impact, do everything possible to get more conforming, and I hope you guys can realize that this is a smart thing we're asking for. Some of the technical aspects of the property here is, it's 18,000 square feet, it's a pre-existing non-conforming, going back to roughly 1960. If the regulations that are in place now were in place back then, the landowner would have had an opportunity to develop the site in a different way, build closer to the road so you have less driveway. We don't have that opportunity now. We are dealt with a property that has roughly double the impervious that the ordinance allows. You know, roughly 40% of the property is currently impervious. Most of it is just driveway, people are driving here and there, parking, you know, it's a decent-sized structure, there's some concrete sidewalk, you know, to allow you to get from the upper level to the lower level. Most of that, as far as the concrete, is pretty important. I mean, the driveways, they're kind of sprawling, you know, they could be minimized. And the main reason we're actually having to apply, to simply narrow this discussion, is we're applying to put a roof over an area we're already parking on, the landowner already parks vehicles on. However, I encouraged the applicants to do as much as possible to get compliant, to make it very aware to the board that we can't do anything else. The size of the dwelling is really irrelevant, because the area that it's impacting is already impervious. So if it was a 20-car garage, or one-car garage, that really wouldn't change our variance request. We're in this position because the lot was developed prior to the ordinance, there's topography, and, you know, there's no way for us to move the house. We can't possibly access the house and meet the 20%. Now, he's going to speak to the needs of the garage, and why he is really here tonight for his personal request, you know, to develop the property and prove it, that it's suitable for everything else. You probably saw the letters that were sent in. Three of the letters were very thought-out letters by landowner associates that took the time to review things, and actually understand the technical aspect of this request, and gave it support, and actually welcomed the improvements to the property, the ability to build a garage, update the structure, and improve the neighborhood. The other letters, which were, I would say, two of the ones that came in tonight, were kind of boilerplate, they didn't really technically address the issue with this request, that were a lawful non-conformity, and we are applying to be more conforming. Which, if you, if you actually really care about the forest lakes overlay and the ability to lower the impervious, you would be forced to approve this application because you're getting more conforming. And ultimately, those letters that attempt to oppose us encourage this board to approve this application tonight because we're going to be more conforming with the ordinance. Additionally, if the ZBA can now offer any relief tonight, you are essentially saying to the applicant, you're non-conforming, you can't do anything to your property, because it's impossible for you to become 100% conforming. And that is not a real position that is a common sense position. He's applying, he's making every opportunity to show that he's going to be minimizing his impact. Now, if the board, you know, wanted to do something to improve this property, as well as the forest lakes overlay, they could possibly ask the applicant, as part of his land use permit, to be compliant with the landscape ordinance that's been adopted. If you had to plant two or three trees in front of this house, he'd be willing to do that, which would further bring this property into conformity with the ordinance. Additionally, if the request could be granted by the board tonight, the applicant would be willing to have a site visit once the restoration is completed, and so that it has been, to the land use department. So there would be a paper trail that he didn't just say, "I'm going to do it," he would have evidence that he did what the ZBA reviewed he was going to do and actually followed through on it. Meaning, there's a lot of driveways out here, and we're proposing restoring those areas that are driven on to grass, and have them become impervious, which is approximately 1,700 square foot of land. It's not ideal, I wish we could get some more relief, but this is the actual absolute minimum relief we need, to get this property ADA accessible, have a garage, be able to get people safer from the vehicles to the house.
Hi. Can you guys hear me? It's okay? Good, I'm a little taller than this microphone, I guess. My name's Kevin Baragat, this is my wife sitting there, Sarah, and we own 4452 North Spider Lake Road, and, yeah, we want to, we fully understand and raise our hand and say that our property is, excuse me, it's very nervous, that I'm very out of compliance, right, at nearly 40%. That that's a very high number, and it's virtually, literally double what the current ordinance is allowed. At the same time, I would, I'm requesting to have a garage, and I need that garage, and I'd like to, I'd like to build that, because I need to have access for my handicapped elderly parents. And so when we put this plan together, I didn't just take it very lightly, I also attended some of the meetings, you might remember me from the meeting in March, and then I've been virtually following again in April. And while I understand the need for the 20% impervious surface requirement, it is virtually impossible for me to achieve that goal. We did a lot of different things, and like, one of the issues with the easement of the driveway for my neighbor to the east of me, they have access there, and that dictates the entrance way that I have to my property. And when we tried to reconfigure and do different layouts, it increased the driveway further because if I have to turn, or instead of having like a direct facing, the percentage kept going up. So what we realized, again, from previous meetings till today, is that it is, it is very much a drive to get to 20%. And so in doing that, while the garage is approximately 35 by 35, albeit, some of that has to be for ADA accessibility, if we go off of 35 by 35, the idea is that, I lost my train of thought, that the, oh, the reduction. So when we started planning and working with Jesse and stuff, it was, it was meant to reduce as much as possible, and you'll see that on the site plan, I am proposing removing my shed in addition to almost all of the other gravel, driveway, impervious surface. So the idea was to put forth the best effort, the strongest argument for allowing my variance. If I, if I did anything else, or came up with other plans, the number didn't go down from 40 to 30, it went from 40 to 32, or 40 to 33, and we felt that that wasn't good enough. I care about what happens at Spider Lake, I own the house here, and I want to move towards compliance as best as I can, and I need, I need a little bit of help, so that's why I'm here. And also, by removing the, like, the shed, for example, it didn't remove the equipment that's inside that shed, okay, like a riding lawnmower, and my snow blower, and some of my other things that are common to people that live in the Lakes area, and, but the advantage was moving all those into the garage provided me a square footage advantage, and the efficiency increased as well. One of the other points I kind of wanted to make was that the easement, I think I might have said that, the easement does dictate how I enter the property, and I can't choose. Maybe some of you guys have visited the property, you would see, if I could change the driveway to the other side, and just put the, put the garage in front of the house, and just come right off the road, I can't do that, it's significantly more steep, and also, my septic field is in the way. You know, when we, when we bought this property, we bought this property a couple few years ago now, one of the reasons we bought the property was because it had good bones, as my wife would say, and the septic field that was on the property was actually new, it was forward and closer to the lake, and then shortly after that, it began having significant issues, backup issues, problems, and so we had some surveys done on that, and working with the environmental department, Faith Sousa, maybe you guys know who that is, she's a really nice lady. So it was determined you could fix what you got, that is close to the lake, that septic field, or we could move it to that, near the road. And Faith was, you know, very happy, and said, "Moving roadside, and closer to the road, away from the lake, in any manner is always beneficial." I think we could all pretty much agree with that, and that's, that leads into this, this, excuse me.
This request here?
Is because I'm trying to push the garage and the needs, that size that garage, as far forward as I can towards the road, thus reducing driveway, reducing impervious surface. This is all like the very common theme that I want to, I want to try to reiterate with the board. One of the other things I think is worth mentioning is that the letters that I had read that were sent in favor, I really thank those neighbors, and those are the neighbors that are directly affected by me, they're both on each side of my property and across the street. So these, this is like very much a localized, local community that is in favor, that you could also see that I have a lot of stuff outside. I mean, I'm utilizing the very large parking area right now, not just to park cars, but there's also like a lot of stuff. The size of the garage that's requested, excuse me, is to bring all of that indoors, bring all of that indoors, bring the shed indoors, bring it all under, let's say, let's just call it one house, and that's it, right? Like, there is no, there is nothing else after that for me. Maybe if, yeah, and, and I think, oh, I just want to, I just want to reiterate as well that, that I'm not adding any impervious surface anywhere that doesn't already exist. I want to repurpose what is already there, and then, and then reduce everything that is non-essential. I think that's pretty much all I have for, at this time, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. All right, we'll have a public comment at 7:59. Seeing none, we'll close it at 7:59 and a half. Okay, back to us. Could you help me with one of the submitted drawings, which is the demolition... Could you help me with one of the submitted drawings, which is the demolition detail?
Sure.
Now, I'm looking at this sheet right here, so you know what I'm looking at, okay? Yes. That detail that has, let's say this, on the left-hand side, that part that cuts into the property, is that where the shed is currently located?
No, the shed is in addition to that, so I guess the demolition detail is not showing that the shed is as part of the removed area.
Okay, 'cause I-
It would be like another box to the north of that west side of the property, a little bit.
Okay. 'Cause when I, when I, in our write-up, we had that the shed was going to remain, but you say that's, it's gonna be gone.
That's correct. Oh, in the write-up, it says that the shed was to remain?
Yeah, it just said-
In my report, it does.
Yeah, it says there is a small shed that will remain.
Oh, that, yeah, that, I apologize, I believe that that's clearly a mistake, and that the shed would be removed, yes.
Okay.
How large is the shed?
It's about, I think it's eight and a half foot by 18.
And that would be verified for 31% through the land use process. It's compatible with the field inspection.
Oh, so in the, in the reduction number, that shed is included?
I don't believe it was included, but he would be bound by the number that would be approved if he was able to get there. So if it was approved for 31, you know, it was an Aspel drawing to verify the field inspection that enough gravel would continue to be removed to get him to the group there. So that would be verified.
And on the right-hand side, going down the property, which there's no north indication here, but on the right-hand side, that strip, that is, that is the, that is a current driveway? What is?
Yeah, that is current impervious surface from the driveway.
And that would also cover where your current well is?
Correct, correct.
He's using most of that area for parking and storage, not every day, but-
When, when, when the septic field had the backup issue and we moved the field, I had to move the well. The original well was basically on top of where the current new septic field is, so they had to remove that. So, so, yeah, that is all parking area, and then the guys just brought the big drill rig, and, you know, they just drilled right through the, that surface.
How, how large is the easement?
I think, yeah, the, oh, okay, the easement, if you go north-south, like vertically on the paper that you're looking at, I think the current, the current width of the easement, or at least the way the current driveway stands, I should be clear that I don't know the easement specifically, it's about 18 feet wide, maybe a little bit less than that. And then, so with my neighbors that owns the resort next to me, the removal of that is too narrow that, but maintain access.
But narrow it up.
But narrow it up, that's correct, that's correct.
Almost a single car?
Yeah, put it this way, it's wide enough, just for like a, for a speaking point, I guess, is that when people rent at the resort, that's a jason, that's next to me there, if they come in with like a 22-foot boat trailer, they drive right down there. And then they find out they can't, they can't get up, there's nowhere to turn around, it's too small. So it's wide enough to appear like you could drive down there with a big trailer, and then they back up into my property, you know, to drive, to drive away.
Yeah, I visited your property, just for the record, and it looked pretty ample, coming down that slope.
If you're fucking trailer, you're invited to try, right?
No, but I know what you're talking about.
Was that, I believe, was that the white car? You had a white car?
Yes.
I think I saw some security cameras.
Okay, fine. Hey, good, let it be proven that I was there.
They still share.
Now, help me with my math on this one. And I'm going by the write-up on here, which is this sheet, okay? Currently, the house is 2,577?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the concrete pad and the walk is 985?
Yes.
The 3,782 is all the current gravel drive and the material that you're preparing or proposing to remove. So if I took 1,700 out of that 3,782, I wind up with 2,082? And if I add that up, I got 6,948. Are you?
Yeah, you're saying even square footage plus concrete pad, walkway square footage?
Yeah, I'm taking the house at 2,577, and I'm adding on to that, I'm adding on to the house 1,304 square feet, because that's, is the 35 by 35 garage plus that 19.4 by five-foot strip in the front?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I have the garage and the house, new house, at 3,881, the concrete pad will remain at 985, and the gravel drive would be, at this point now, 2,082, 'cause I took And that brought me to 6,948, as opposed to your current 7344.
I believe that's, that's-
Okay.
That's accurate, yeah.
All right, so actually, then, if that was to hold, that would give us an impervious surface of 37%?
37%?
Yeah.
So you had 69, what was your?
6,948.
48. And my, I thought my total property was 18,543?
Yeah.
So if I take 6,948, 18 divided by 18,543? Okay, 30.
So take this number plus this number plus this number minus that number.
Yeah, these three, that should be his 6,92577 plus 965?
73.4.
Plus 3762?
Yeah.
7304. Minus 7, 1,000. 5604? I get 56-
What's that percentage?
Okay, so 5604 divided by 18,543 brings me to 30.2%.
We believe our calculations are correct.
All right, then, where am I wrong? Again, I took the new house and the addition, I added that to the 2,577.
The new house and most of the addition is currently covered by gravel, so the gravel were removed.
Oh, I see what you're doing, okay, okay.
So most of this area is parking, and you can see that on the photos.
All right.
So I'm confident in these numbers, that the 31% can apply.
Okay, okay, no, I just was trying to figure out why-
Why I made this diagram, because it's very, there's a lot going on.
Okay, no, I understand that, and I was just trying to figure out why I was off, but you got it.
The garage is eating existing-
Yeah, it's taken up, right.
So the garage isn't making us better or worse.
It's neutral.
And we're, we're, we're using some of that gravel on the north side of the building into that accessible wing, but mostly we're just shaving around.
I think that it's not clear, because we don't have an existing that shows all that gravel where the garage is.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, well, I'm just, as I was doing the numbers, I was saying, wait a minute, I'm off here somewhere, but-
Oh, I see.
Yeah, 'cause it looks like you didn't add the new garage into the calculation, but it's because it was existing.
It's not an addition, it's actually neutrality, yeah. So it stays at, what, 2,577?
Yeah.
Right, it doesn't, doesn't go up or down.
So if you take the gravel number from 3,782 and roughly take off the 1,700 square feet?
That comes out of the 77.
You're gonna get into the 30s.
I'll be just under 30.
So we're rounding about the 30.2. We know what we have to-
Okay.
Have an Aspel.
No, that's fine, I just, when I was doing the calculations, I was trying to figure out, and I see where the, the mistake was adding on the new addition on to the current house, where in fact it's not.
Yeah, right, we called it proposed site plan.
I should've had another sheet.
I shouldn't, yeah, that is correct, the proposed, yes.
Okay, no, I'm just-
Do these numbers include when you remove the existing shed? Or would it be less than?
We-
I think they include it.
I think they do, definitely either way, whatever the variance is awarded, he is bound by that when he pulls an end use permit. So this driveway is faulty by the 13, so the variance would be bound by that when he gets the part to verify it.
I think, though, the question related to that is if the impervious request could be lowered because the shed could be taken out, so you could get down to 30 instead of 31, or something like that, right?
I believe it was included.
Okay.
At 100 feet.
Because I didn't, I didn't see the shed noted in the square foot calculation here.
Which is probably why it's not in the calculation, because it wasn't in the inventory.
Okay, 'cause I was, I was trying to say, there's a bonus for you.
We could use it, but-
No, 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 I, what I'd like to do is get rid of it. I want to do that, and I will, that could be bound, right? I wanna go to the percentage, but I can also offer additionally, I will remove the shed, that's, that's, so if I come up with a site plan that is 31%, even with the shed, I'll still remove it, because it is impervious surface. It is impervious surface, and the goal is to reduce.
It's also not conforming sheds, it's a setback, minor issue, but that's just how the property was developed, no setback.
Is there a way to get a number of the percentage that the shed covers of the lot to lock that in?
It's 8, what is it?
1%?
8 and a half by 18.
It's just about 17, 18 is-
153 feet.
Yeah, it's about a percent, it's a little shy of one additional percent of the shed.
And on these applications, if I calculate this 10,000 times, if I get to 30.2, I make the variance say 31, if it's that close, just because there's ground errors. Bill's not gonna be out there with a drone and a scanner to be able to get that accurate, so, you know, we make an honest effort.
No, you see me on the security cameras.
So we've spent many months inventory, and that's the deal.
Those were my questions.
John?
No questions.
I don't have any questions, just thank you for all the work put into this. Appreciate that. Detail is-
It's in the hundreds of times. I wanna, I wanna do right.
Details, great. Last chance to the board, anything else? Yes, Bill?
I had this said, he mentioned the ADA and the parents, and I just wondered if you'd like to discuss that just a little bit, if the applicant's parents will be living in his home as a residence, and there's a need for an ADA portion of that garage. That's, if it's pertinent, but he did bring up the fact, engineer, they brought it up three times, the need for the ADA.
Paul, if I might, is there any, is there any state law we have awareness for ADA compliance with this residential, I mean, zoning codes or ordinances?
I know that the ZBA's discussed ADA accessibility and proof of disability in your decision-making for other variance requests. From a planning perspective and a zoning perspective, you know, we don't really consider ADA accessibility, or larger homes, or doors, or anything like that in our contemplation in the zoning code. The only time typically it would show up would be related to parking spaces and requiring them, but that, that actually falls under the building code versus zoning code.
Indoor handicap ramps.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring it up, because, you know, it was a part of the conversation, so.
Yeah, well, this is interesting, because it's actually an issue where we are decreasing the non-compliance, so. So we'll start. Number one is practical difficulty exists on the subject site, such as exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape or area, presence of flood plain, exceptional topography, got it at that time, conditions, need to comply with the federal or state law, and the strict compliance with the zoning ordinance standards would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the subject site for permitted use, or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. Demonstration of a practical difficulty shall have a bearing on the subject site or use of the subject site, and not to the applicant personally. Economic hardship or optimum profit potential are not considerations for practical difficulty. the zoning ordinance standards, is 20%. However, the house is already there. It's already, it's already 40%. And to comply to the 20%, you see where I'm going here, I mean, the ordinance says 20%. To strictly hold to 20% is to basically remove the structures that are already there, which is not practical, possible, but not practical. So I, for my vote, I'm gonna say it's satisfied.
Oh, I agree with you, it's satisfied, because, as you just said, we have to tear down that house in order to get it, and leave all of it there, you know, and the gravel. I mean, it's, he's already taken out the gravel that he can get out, so.
And he's already building on impervious surfaces?
On impervious surfaces. Right.
It's quite narrow.
John?
Well, I guess the question would be, the size of the garage, does it have to be that big? Can we get rid of more impervious surface by making that garage smaller and taking out more gravel? I don't think we're going to get to the 20% no matter what we do without just ripping gravel out, but that would be my question, is there a way to get it a little smaller?
I also had another question pop up.
I, like, so, one of the things I think is worth pointing out is that the garage sounds big, because it says 35 by 35, but if you look, if you do look, the garage is actually 24 by 36, so it is a little bit, it is a little smaller than what we think, right? The ADA capability from the entranceway there is left to, like, the house, I guess you could say, right? It's not just that I'm building a 35 by 35 garage. And then the second thing was that I wanted to go smaller, but then I ran into an issue with, I couldn't get rid of the shed, right? I needed to have place to store the stuff, because, like, most of it's in the shed and outside on this gravel, and stored, storage on the gravel that I'm proposing to remove, too. So in order to get that, like I said before, like, under one roof, under one house, that's where that kind of came from.
Can I ask another question while he's out there? Below the proposed addition, it kind of looks like the gravel drive is extended all the way down to the bottom of the lot, is that also a drive, or is that just a continuation?
Oh, okay, so on the demolition detail?
No, on the proposed site plan, there's the gravel drive right just above the proposed addition, and then that dotted line kind of continues all the way down the entire lot. Does the drive take up the entire length of the...
Oh, no, that dotted line, that full vertical line you're speaking about, from basically top of the roadway all the way to almost the water there?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I believe, the lot line.
That's a setback.
That's your setback. That's your setback.
Okay.
One is the lot line.
Well, what's this other line?
And then the other one is the setback, that's correct, yeah.
This is the lot line is the setback.
Yeah, so this property is...
Okay, what's this line?
Lot 220 and half of 219.
Yeah. That's a portion of the other platted lot that used to be next door, that they split between the two parcels.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just seeing if there was more driveway to get rid of.
The proposed addition is not all garage, it's...
That's correct.
And maybe a floor plan would help, potentially, once you get, if you get down that road and you need a floor plan, you could ask that of the applicant as well to help determine what the layout looks like.
So let me go again, by satisfied, not satisfied?
Yes.
Satisfied. The demonstrated practical difficulty results from exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the subject site at the time the ordinance was adopted or amended, which are different than typical properties in the same zoning district or the vicinity. Again, this is the same conundrum, and that is the fact that the property is already there, and the gravel is already in. That being the case, again, I would have to say, this one is, for my vote, satisfied.
Paul, I think it's also part of, there's part of two lots there, or there's a lot and kind of a half and all that driveway, and it's been just kind of unruly, and that's over the years. I just, I think, I find it satisfied, because it's just, it was years' worth of neglect or, I don't know, I don't want to call it neglect, I'm just not worried about impervious, so...
I have one of those lots.
I'll say satisfied.
I'll agree.
All right, satisfied. The applicant's problem is not self-created.
I don't think it was created by the self that's in our room today, this is created many years ago. I have a problem with that.
So you are?
Satisfied.
This one's a little more difficult for me.
I think it's satisfied.
Because you want to build a garage, you know, that's self-created, however, you're building it on an area which is already there, so it's a satisfied... The variance were to find substantial justice by preserving substantial property rights similar to those employed by the majority of other properties in the vicinity and other properties in the same zoning district. The decision shall not bestow upon the property special development rights nor not enjoyed by other properties in the same district, or which might result in substantial adverse impacts on properties in the vicinity such as supply of light and air significant, increases in traffic, increased odors, or an increase in the danger of fire, or other activities which may endanger the public safety, comfort, morals, or welfare.
I agree that's satisfied.
I agree it's satisfied.
We're on a roll here. The variance shall be the minimum necessary to grant relief created by the practical From everything we heard, I'd say this is satisfied, because the only way of cutting down the spacing would be to reduce the size of the building, but we, you have indicated that's not only a garage, but also, what, living quarters, or...
That's correct.
Well, an ADA, room for ADA accessibility.
Things get wider, essentially, but doorways get wider.
Doorways all have to be 36 versus... I think it's satisfied.
I'll agree.
I think it's satisfied, but I would like to add something you knew about ADA.
Sure.
Somewhere in this conversation.
Well, probably would be in your, any type of motion.
Can we, can I get a little clarification for reasoning for it's satisfied?
John mentioned ADA.
Maneuverability ADA, living ability to move around that, and it's already on impervious surface.
Yeah, it's already on the impervious surface, it's also, not just the garage, but it's also living quarters.
And it sounds like it's not unprecedented that we're taking in ADA as consideration for it.
That never, that didn't get approved.
Oh, it didn't get approved.
Now they couldn't provide proof that they needed the ADA accessibility and...
So that's one thing that attorney, just to point out, too, that has to be, the burden of proof is on the applicant, that they require, or that they legitimately have proof that they need it for ADA, just so that you're aware, this is recently with a case that I have with the attorney, because Peter Wendling, and someone was putting the steps downstairs, so they had to bring, actually, documentation from a doctor that there was an ADA need there, so...
F, the conditions or situations which necessitate the requested variance is not so general, or of such recurrent nature as to make the formulation of a general regulation I think that this is a specific request based upon the current configuration of the property, as well as the amount of impervious surface which is already there. And furthermore, this is also mitigated by the fact that the applicant is going to remove 1700-plus feet of impervious surface, which is to the benefit of the ordinance.
Paul, I agree with you, this really doesn't kind of fit our normal moment, because we don't normally have something at 40% going down 10%, I mean, that's 25% reduction, basically, from...
It's a 9%, right?
Well, 9%, but still, 9% reduction.
I'll agree it's satisfied.
It's satisfied.
There is no reasonable alternative location on the lot for the proposed improvements for which a variance is sought, where such alternate location would eliminate the need for the requested variance, or reduce the extent of the conditions necessitating the variance.
Satisfied.
Satisfied.
Yep. This one's easy. The requested variance shall relate only to the property that is under the control of the applicant.
So it's satisfied?
Okay, may I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the variance based on the fact that all the requirements have been met, and the fact specifically that the impervious area is being reduced from 40 to close to 30%, which is a 25% reduction in impervious surface, and also to allow some leeway for ADA compliance.
I will second that motion or support.
Do you want any documentation which satisfies the ADA compliance? Can we request that?
Yeah, you can request it.
Yes, okay, so, that's a friendly amendment.
A doctor letter, you know, what you're looking for, something like that, so...
Yeah, based on, based on, how do I put that?
Based on the discussion?
Based on proof being submitted that you need for ADA. I'm also thinking of the future a little bit, that they're going to do this, and then two years down the road, they have a problem, and parents are now kind of stuck with it, so, based on information from the person, people that they're, that requires me, stuff, part of the motion.
Okay. Motion is by John to, motion to approve case number 4-25 for 4452-02, North Spider Lake Road, 03780219-00, for a 30-plus percent or 31% impervious surface variance, from the, oh, excuse me, it's be a reduction of the impervious surface area to about 30%, plus allowing for the ADA compliance based upon sufficient proof provided by authorities.
You can request it for 31%.
It was 31%.
31%? I believe you said 30, I could be...
I said 30, because we had talked about 30.
Yeah.
31.
Their request is for 31, that's correct.
Okay.
31. I'm wondering about the shed, if you also want to provide that in the condition, I mean, he mentioned that here, but I think it'd be good to add it as a condition that the shed is also removed.
And furthermore, that the shed is removed.
As long as you're comfortable with that, okay.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Chairman, who seconded that? Who seconded?
He seconded.
Rod?
Rod.
I'm sorry, John or Rod?
I thought Rod.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was a little different one.
Very different.
Okay, well now move on to item 9C, which is the request for a change in our meeting dates. There is some discussion that possibly we could be moving our meeting dates to the third Tuesday of the month. Would anybody, that's fine for me, I don't know if it would interfere with anybody else.
Let me just check my...
I have other meetings on that night, so there may be times I'm not available, but we have other staff available as well from Becker and Reiter.
And I did text Claire just to verify, Claire says either would be fine, so the third or fourth week, would make a difference for you?
Not on a Tuesday, does it make a difference?
I think moving into the fourth week is too close to other meetings, Planning Commission, as well as, I guess, the trustees is a...
Second Monday?
Second Monday, yeah.
Is that why you're moving, you're looking to move it?
Claire still has other meetings that she's trying to, like, she has special meetings due, so...
Okay.
She could, you know, so the third or the fourth is what she's thinking, a week.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we will be changing the calendar for a meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals from the current second Tuesday of the month to the third Tuesday of the month. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Effective when?
Effective next month.
Okay, do we change it that fast?
Sure. Okay, yeah.
We'll propose a new schedule.
Do you have an application for next month?
Not yet.
Keeps us off the holidays, keeps us...
Did you just second my motion?
I can't.
Well, I, oh, I'm sorry, John did, I'm sorry. Motion by Paul, seconded by John, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, we're now up to the second public comment, starting at 8:38, seeing nobody, it is over at 8:38. And it next, okay, hang on a second here. I need to... Okay. All right, that would make our next meeting on Tuesday, June 17th. Is that what you got, Bill?
Yes, I believe so.
That's what I got.
From the 10th to the 17th.
From the 10th to the 17th.
I have to check my calendar, but right off the bat, I may not be available that day, so...
And you seconded? Okay, all right, and with that, we're adjourned.